Good evening, everyone. Would like to reconvene the Thursday, May eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, meeting of the Lake Forest Board of Education. If you would please join in this evening for Pledge of Allegiance, followed by room assignment.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and consider it a holy and righteous statement. While my nation under God indivisible, with the receipt of its own.
Thank you. I gotta tell you, it always makes me smile, all of these voices saying the Pledge of Allegiance before you hear that littlest voice just saying it aloud. So, thank you for that. Welcome to everyone who has joined in person, as well as those that have joined online. Just a reminder that we are streaming tonight's meeting across the web. And minutes, as well as that reporting will be posted online once they are finalized. Start this evening with roll call of board members. Dr. Y.
President.
Mrs. McCloskey.
Here.
Mrs. Starkey.
Here.
Vice President Ralph there, and President Earl Dempsey serving as Chair's present. We have all five board members present. Thank you all for joining us. For the two point four approval of the agenda, Mr. Ralph. Before I make a motion, we approve the agenda after that.
Second.
Emotional floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? See none move to vote. All those in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? The abstentions. Motion carries five to zero. I have two point five people that have made a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the April twenty-seventh, regular and executive session that is written.
Second.
Emotional floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? See none move to vote. All those in favor. Aye. Any opposed? The abstentions. Motion carries five to zero. All right, the fun part of the evening, why I think most of you are here. I know two point six recognitions and presentations. Dr. Lucas, welcome everybody. I'm gonna go via Pam Hobbs.
Good evening, Mrs. Hobbs. Pass it down. I'm Pam Hobbs, coordinator for the Lake Forest Odyssey Line Program. It is a creative international problem solving competition that runs from kindergarten all the way up through college. Adults, elderly, you name it, they can do it. We kicked off our year back in November, and we're still rebuilding after COVID. We started talking about that. We had eight competitive and one primary kindergarten through second grade. March was our state tournament right here on Lake Forest High School campus, and out of those eight, we had four qualified for world finals. There were over one hundred Delaware teams. And we are four of the thirty-three who are going to world finals. That is a trip to Michigan State University. We should be talking with them in here. We're gonna go to Michigan State University. We've been fundraising, and I'll talk about that and a little bit more once we get them in here, because I'm gonna spoil what they've got.
All right. Introduce them?
I can, yes. Hopefully, they're in order. This is first time, oh, Emma, Jacob Denham.
Jacob.
Kaylin Farrell. Yep, they have the whole. Alexis Hansen, Kaylin is also first timer. Alexis Hansen. She's a repeat world finalist. First, but first of all, that was a repeat world finalist. In various volumes, it's her first year and first time at world finals. There comes Abby Hansen and Marv Salerno, the dream team over there. Those are our middle school performance team. Then we have our high school performance team of Hannah Boyer. That's our high school. None of our high schoolers are here, because they're all on sports teams.
All right.
Yes. Sorry. There we go. Hannah Boyer. Resident Rangel. And that's their coaches, Melanie Boyer, and these. That's a repeat. They are the state champions this year. They were in second place last year. They moved up to state champion this year. Yep. This is our structure team, Nicholas Simo. Josh Simo. And then we have Annabeth Swager. That was our team, sibling team. We had middle schoolers and then their younger siblings. And their coach was Renee Simo and Natalie Shapowski, who's at the Little League. And then we, and the side of, it's a whole four of you. Okay, so, I'm gonna move over here when you finish. Now, sorry. Here we go. So, we started back in March, or we started in November, and their competition was in March. So, we have two performance teams who had, the whole thing is, you have eight, all this time to make a skin based on about twenty-five different parameters and scoring points, and they have to have costumes and scenery and creativity, of course, is what it's all about. It was most dramatic character ever, and they had to have a drama king or queen, whoever reacted how many times? Three times, but one time, it was kind of like the boy who cried wolf. One of those times, it was really something was wrong. Their problem was sponsored by Arden Hammer, so they had to do something creative and funny with Arden Hammer. The middle school team used it as a, what would you call that?
A chemical.
Chemical reaction that calls like a little bit of a explosion? A little bit, a little bit, nothing, yeah. And then our high school team had a fairy tale theme, and they use the Arden Hammer as their fairy dust, right? Okay, and then our structure team, Josh, you know, the fossil wood structure, and how much can it weigh?
Fifteen grams.
Which is basically what?
Fifteen paper clips.
So, it can't weigh more than fifteen paper clips, and then they stack wood on it until it crushes. It had to be in three parts this year, and they had to be hidden in their set. It was called hidden in plain sight. And so, this year, it held one seventy-five. But what's the most the structure's ever held that you guys have built?
It was like six hundred or seven hundred. There you go. So, that was tough this year, because it had to be in three parts, and you had to put it together.
And then our high school vehicle team, that is not here. They've been state champions for a while, and they build a ride on vehicle that was propelled with a drill and had the news. I don't know. It performed at these shows, and I don't understand the engineering, but they do a fantastic job for them. So, after they won their world finalist recognition, we started the job of fundraising. So, this trip to get to Michigan with all of us and their coaches costs about thirty-eight thousand dollars. So, luckily, we get money from the district. Delaware is the only state that gets money from their states, right? Some of the legislators for keeping us on the line item. But we have, to date, raised fifty-five hundred dollars through corporate and personal donations. Thank you. And we've raised over eighteen thousand dollars in fundraising. So, they sell snow guns, baked goods. What else have we done? Prep the rope, twenty-four hundred roses that we prep. We sell and do things in each of the lower elementary schools and middle school and high school. So, thank you very much to those administrators and secretaries and custodians and everybody that puts up with us. We have just fantastic community support, fantastic Lake Forest support, and it really just does a person good to be a part of it. They're gonna be four out of over eight hundred teams. And so, when we get there, there's teams from thirty-two different states, Guam, Japan, Singapore, China, Switzerland, Mexico, Hong Kong, Poland, and South Korea. So, when we say a world finals, it really is a real final. So, they'll trade pens, they'll break language barriers, they'll make friends, thanks to social media, they'll be social media friends at least forever. So, it's a pretty cool experience. All but about five of them or six of them have been before, and they came back and want to do it all again, and all of these coaches have been before and came back and want to do it again. Some of these parents have been there and done that, and you know, they pay their own way. It's basically like, oh, there's our family vacation, so we're going to world finals. So, thank you very much for the continued support and thank you. We're also very thankful for our volunteers, like Earl Dempsey, the volunteers to judge the competitions, because they can't have a competition without judges. The coaches are supposed to be in. And here's Rachel Argo, who came out of retirement to pitch in, and I would say you can do down and out this year.
All right. Hang on, before you go, I can't let her, like, walk out of here without acknowledging Pam is retiring this year, and for those of you that have not been around quite as long. She's been here fifteen years. She's coached two hundred and thirty-six teams. Over one thousand five hundred Spartans have gone to world finals because of Pam. Eleven trips. Eleven world finals trips, thirty-three teams. So, we couldn't have done it without your leadership.
Organization and will to keep us all going in the right direction.
I gotta go. Or, thank you for that.
Congratulations. Good luck. I think we have another big group. All right, next we've got Mr. Curry and Ms. Scott is the second. Okay. All right, and we got the FFA.
We went to state convention back in March. We took over forty students with this large group that I think I've ever taken to state convention. So, we had a really good year. So, I know we've been here a while, so we're gonna get through this. So, for floriculture, we had, they came in first place, and we go into nationals in the fall. We have Emily Broth, who also got her state degree. And Emma Law on the team, who also got her state degree. And not here today was Julia Novak and Alana DeSora on that team. For prepared public speaking, we had another first place individual on Kayla Pippen. She'll be going to nationals. She also got a proficiency award and a state degree. We had another public speaker, Margaret Stewart, who placed that in. The next couple aren't here, but I just wanted to mention employment skills, like job interview. We had a first place going to nationals is Montana Golden. The state FFA president is Noah Dixon, who graduated here in two thousand twenty-two. Ava Gala was third place for free speaking. Aiden Gary was seventh place for celebrating his speaking. Our axel team was second place with Mason Hay, who was present. Other team members, Sally Urban, Ryder Spinner, and Izzy Wilson, our brother. Our marketing plan was also second place with Katie Argo and and Miley Wilkie. Great, her food is not here today. Our chapter code of conduct, which is parliamentary procedure, team was fourth with DJ Marzano. Davis Turner. Alexis Roland. Alexis Stark. Brianna Del Orville. And Justin Gary and James Becker have been present on that team. Our power business management team's not present, but they placed fifth. Meet evaluation, which occurred before state convention, and then they did day of service at the convention. They placed sixth with Kayla Ryle and Cody Rodding. And Giuliani, Cruz Cordova, and Zoe Ford are not present. Is there anybody left? Oh, Jordan, yeah, I was trying to figure out who was here. Yep, Jordan Hand got her state degree. And Ryan Deputy was first place for the repair and maintenance proficiency award.
So, and thank you, everybody, for coming. I think our president, our newly elected chapter president, Kim Pippen, would like to say, take a few minutes, very small to them. But she's gonna say, we'll say a few words.
Hi, everyone. My name is Kayla Pippen, and I was elected as the new president for our chapter. I just wanted to take this time and say thank you, guys, so much for all your support. We definitely cannot do what we do without your guys' help. We had about forty people attend our state convention this year, and a lot of them competed, worked in the day of service, and were able to get multiple awards and winnings from that. So, once again, I just want to say thank you so much for your time and all that you put into our chapter, because we truly are blessed to have you guys.
Thank you. Oh, sorry.
It is truly a great opportunity to see these kids do a great job and watch them grow on my chapter and forge and extend that out to post-high school. We really do a great job. So, and we can't thank you guys enough. So, congratulations, everybody. Thank you for making this proud. We got your hair. Thanks for the screen. Sorry, folks, just one second. Okay. That's always been very fun, especially with those two large groups. They've been really making the district proud. We're on to two point seven citizens participation opportunity for members of the public to address the board. If you were interested in addressing the board this evening, we'd ask for you to sign up at the front table, present the sheet to the superintendent's office. Do we have any this evening? All right, we do not have anyone signed up this evening. So, we will close public comment for the time being, and we'll reopen in two weeks at the start of our next public session. We're on to section three, reports, and three twenty-one financial reports. Mr. Kirk Kellerman, welcome, Mr. Kellerman.
Good evening. This is the monthly financial board report for the end of April, April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. And so, we'll start off with the revenue picture. Really no, any, not many changes up on the state section there, just a little bit added for the transportation line, but really nothing to speak of. The one thing that I would point you to is down in the local funds section, I've updated the number there under debt service impact fee for anticipated receipts. It shows one hundred and twenty-nine thousand eight sixty-one. That's the check that we just received from Kent County for all the startups, the construction startups in the county over the past several months. And just as a note of reference there, that number is over twice as much as pretty much every other district, with the exception of capital. It's almost twice what capital is. So, in terms of that one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, it seems like there's a lot still going on in the Lake Forest schools. That's good news to see that. Down in the federal funds, again, no major updates there, and then we received ninety-one percent of all funds received compared to ninety-two percent last year. Any questions on the revenue side? Questions for Mr. Kellerman or me? Moving on to the expenditure portion of the report, there are, you're gonna start to see a couple of negative numbers down the percent remaining towards the bottom underwater sewer. There was negative two percent of the budget remaining. Some of that might be the fact that we've got a significant amount encumbered on purchase orders. So, we'll have to take a look at that and see whether or not that's gonna be sufficient to carry us through the rest of the fiscal year, or if we can maybe reduce some of that to get us back under the budget there. But one of the things that I will point out is, is over the past few years here, we've been continuing to shrink some of these budgets to make room so that we can try to stay as close as possible to, you know, balanced budgeting. And so, in the process of shrinking a lot of these budgets, we get closer and closer to exceeding the tolerance of some of these budgets. So, that's one that's shrunk over the last couple of years. So, we might be at the point where we can't shrink it anymore or has to go up for next year. The other one that's negative down there is the use of facilities. That was one that was adjusted upward, the budget back in January, but we have still exceeded it, but I consider that a good news story, because that means there's probably a lot more people out in the community that are using our facilities, and hence, we have more custodial costs that are going to the use of facilities there. So, what we will see too is, is if we do have a lot more of outside organizations using our facilities, that will probably bump up our our other local revenue as well in the revenue side of the picture. So, whenever you see an increase in expenses there, there's probably gonna be a little bit of an increase in revenue as well. And then homebound instructions, the last item down there. When I first got here a few years ago, that budget was up thirty-six, thirty-eight thousand. That shrunk down to thirty. But that might get tight. We'll have to see as we get towards the end, if we can stay within tolerance on that particular budget. Moving on to the second page, as far as total discretionary funds, we have twenty-two percent remaining compared to eighteen percent last year, so we're in better shape. And the only other thing I would point out is down in the non-discretionary, it shows extra time programs, a negative hundred percent. And so, that particular budget, it's got fifteen thousand in there. But it's not an item that's specifically spelled out when we approved the budget back in January. So, extra time is one of those areas that we collect a tax for, but it's been a very minimal tax over the last few years. So, back, I'll back up probably the two or three years leading up to the pandemic. We had, you know, we had some large years of expenditures out of extra time expenses for the tune of maybe a hundred and forty thousand dollars. And then fiscal year nineteen, fiscal year twenty, it dropped down to, you know, thirty, twenty thousand. And then these last few years of the pandemic, it's been sitting between ten and twenty thousand dollars in terms of what we've been spending out of that extra time operating there. So, the tax has been very minimal, and so what we've done now is, is we've looked at what we spent the last few years. We spend up to that amount. And then anything past that, we're pushing off onto our cares expenditures. So, any additional tutoring costs that were occurring past this amount. So, this might be the most that you'll see at this juncture, because now I think we've shifted most of our expenses now onto the care side, so that it doesn't present an appearance of supplanting if they were ever to investigate that. And so, but that is one of those items that we do collect a tax for. It's very minimal the last few years, because right now, we have about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in there. And we collect enough tax to, in the event that we would get back to that point where we're hitting, you know, a hundred and forty thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for expenditures in a given year. Because those particular years, you know, you've got a lot of transportation involved in terms of tutoring. You know, of course, all the extra time costs involved as well. So, all funds, we've got twenty-six percent of the budget remaining compared to twenty-two percent last year. Any questions on the expenditure side of it? Questions on expenditure or anything on this report at all for Mr. Kellerman? So, that's why, two things, Kurt. So, with this extra time program, you mentioned a couple of times that we call it the tax board. Is that part of our tuition tax, or where does that come? No. When you see the other batch tax receipts, okay, that's one of those ones that we've been authorized.
Okay.
The operating budget to continue to collect.
Okay.
And we can adjust that as needed.
So, it's good.
Yeah, it's part of the.
Part of the match tax, okay.
All right, thank you. So, I think right now, the tax rate's set to collect maybe about ten thousand dollars this year. It's really a minimal amount.
For this. So. Right, right. Not the match tax overall, just for, just for this particular.
And then the use of facilities. How difficult would it be at the end of the fiscal year to produce for the board, maybe overall, hold a number of rentals where we collected ease? And what our collections were compared with this budget item of expenses?
I'm not aware of a way to dig into that, but we could look into that. Absolutely.
Okay, yeah. It's just another topic that came up amongst the board in another with these, with these events. So, I think it's, it would be a timely piece of information to have.
Okay.
Thank you. Anything else for Mr. Kellerman? All right, so I believe this report will come up later for a vote for acceptance. Thank you, Mr. Kellerman.
We're on to three point two superintendent report. Dr. Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Dempsey. Good evening, everybody. Congratulations for our award recipients tonight. Thanks to all the teachers, the sponsors who support our students. I also want to thank the many folks in the Lake Forest community who stood together to help pass the recent referendum. This was truly a team effort, as we had members of the school finance committee, the administration, the Lake Forest Community, the Education Foundation, the Lake Forest Education Association, all of our school-based parent-teacher groups, boosters, parents, and of course, the board of ed, band together for a great cause and show that our community supports education. Now, the work fulfilling our promise of being a model of excellence in education can continue, and we can craft an effective plan for the future. I also need to thank Mrs. Simpson and the many, many people who helped out with I Love Lake Forest Day on Saturday. We had a great crowd, great weather, great food, music, more, and thanks to everyone who participated in that. I wanted everyone to know, we've been interviewing candidates for our school council initiative, and we expect to make an announcement regarding those vacancies soon. Speaking of security, student service supervisor, Mr. Weller, hosted the annual Lake Forest Security Summit last week. Members from every school, our SROs, SRO supervisor, members from Felton, Frederica, and Houston Fire Stations attended to discuss readiness and communication in the event of an emergency. The group agreed in principle to meet at least semi-annually and work together to maintain the highest possible security posture for the district. But update on the lead water testing, which has been ongoing in schools across the state. All Lake Forest schools were tested last week. However, we're waiting the results, and once I receive them, I will share with the community by way of school message and also post it to our website. Speaking of communication, if you're not following us on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram, I suggest you do that. The district sends out information often on these platforms to follow us, and that helps keep you informed about the latest district information. As everyone knows, when entering, what might and probably is the busiest time of years for our schools. Many of our students are taking end-of-year assessments, so it's really important that our students get a good night's rest, have a good breakfast, do the very best on every assessment that they have to take. They help us gauge how effective we are and some of the things that we need to make improvements. It's also survey season. So, if you are given the opportunity to take a survey or questionnaire, please give us your feedback. Here in Lake Forest, we are in a continuous state of improvement, so your input helps us put together the best possible product for our students and families. As for the calendar, there are just too many things to list tonight, so I ask you to go to the district website, see the many concerts, ceremonies, sporting events, awards, field days, which are scheduled over the next few weeks, or give your school a call for specific information about any of the events that are going on in the district. So, thank you. You have the floor back. President Dempsey, for any questions or discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Lucas. Any questions or discussion for Dr. Lucas and superintendent report? All right, thank you again, sir. We're on to three point three LFA report. Alright, thank you again, sir, we're on to three point three L F A report. Mr. Ben Black. Welcome, Mr. Black. Oh, we're gonna, we're gonna switch to this Anita Buliszek, welcome.
First of all, I want to say thank you for the entire community. Um, that came together to help us raise our funds for the scholarship. By the time we were done with the pie in the face con scholarship, we made one thousand five hundred and one dollars and ninety five cents. Um, so it was a great affair, even if I did get um, Mr. Dr. Lincoln, a very uh. Very unsettling a tenth, I thought fifteen when I told him he was the winner of the pie in the face. But it was great fun. Um, we also were able to give away ten bikes. Um, and we got some of those donated through the fire department, I'm sorry, from the Harrington PD. We also gave away seven gift cards, one for each building per student, and then they got to also donate. Make their recommendation for a teacher to get a gift card as well, and that donation came from our UNO server. So there was a great lot of giving back, but the way they had to do it was they had to give a feedback, one area improvement. And one positive climate for the district or building whatever, so I typed all of that information up into a Google Doc. Um, so we have all of that information to give the feedback. And it was, there's some some good stuff in there, there's a lot of positive and a couple of good ideas of things that we can do to help improve the district. Um, we are looking forward to all of the celebrations, the. Um, teachers of the year and obviously the teacher retirement on the twenty second of May. So we are looking forward to a great finish of the school year, and we appreciate everything you guys have done for us, and we look forward to a great end year.
Thank you, Mr. Bullshack, any questions, discussion for L F E A report? So unless I missed it, you didn't announce, you didn't report the winner and loser of the pie in the face?
So um, Mr. Dempsey was actually the guy that got to throw the prize, he complained that his arm was hurting too much. I think there was a little bit of competing going on between. Um, the South Elementary Principal and Mr. Sheehan. Dempsey because, you know, there was some too who's going on, but um, Mr. Paulson was the person that got the pie in the face. And the young lady that wailed the pie in his face. I mean, if you haven't seen the video of it, please look at the Facebook page and see it, he did get chocolate off his nose and. Um, he was very fun and enjoyed it, but he he was really excited to get it, he was interested, he was, he was actually felicity. Um, getting the donations and wanting the donations, that was kind of fun. But thank you for everything.
Yes, um, I believe Mr. Al that this went maybe the opposite direction of what you had intended when you had volunteered to. Uh, but yes, I cannot affirm nor deny that uh. Mr. Truitt had anything to do with, I believe we had Katie Smalecki is who I turned it over to, who is in what grade?
Third.
So we had a third grader from south that was uh, uh, very excited to uh, give that pie in the face to her custodian there.
I bet she had a good right arm.
She had a good right wing. And he was covered in chocolate. Uh, thank you all very much, congratulations on a successful uh, fundraiser, I appreciate everything you guys are doing every day, thank you. Alright, we are on to. Um, so uh, section four, there was a note earlier, there was going to be a discussion item, uh, however, because that was uh, in fact, a legal item. Uh, it was something that the board discussed in executive session, it was removed from the public agenda, it will be up for a vote. Uh, later this evening. Uh, so that brings us to section five unfinished business. Uh, board policy second reading in in action, I don't know that route. I make a motion to approve resolution five point one, board policy second reading with any modified with my, excuse me. As the modified during discussion.
Second.
Emotional floor properly seconded, uh, questions, discussion, I believe we will go. Quickly through each of these three, again, this is a second reading, so the board has already reviewed them, first one is. Uh, policy D A C, expense authorization slash reimbursements. Uh, any discussion on B K C? I see none, moving to I F F, lesson plan policy. Any discussion on I F F?
That's such should be lesson plans, I believe, not lesson plan policy, it's uh, lesson plans.
Okay, well, I think that would be a non-substantive change, so whatever the. Any P N calls for?
Yeah, I F F is not in the any P N, so I believe that we came up with this and we've gone to taking policy out of our policies. Uh, as a, as a, as a practice, uh.
So we will just be lesson plans?
Yes, sir.
Alright, any questions, discussion? Alright, thank you, Dr. Lucas, you're on to the final one, I K F graduation requirements. Discussion on I K F. Mr. McCloskey.
Um, we talked before about the credits and how worse the block scheduling. If. There was a reason that block scheduling went away and went back to the seven block or the seven period day or however. Would this still work? Hmm, so then what would happen?
Go ahead, we, yeah, we would have to bring this back up to you, so.
Okay.
Technically, the kids can earn eight credits per year right now, so times that times four, there's thirty two opportunities to credit, you can see the buffer from the twenty seven to the thirty two. Went to a seven credit day. On July, that times for your twenty eight possible credits. This is a twenty seven credits, that is not much of a bumper. Uh, if that ever did happen, the recommendation I think we would have is to go down to what uh, the state requires, which is twenty four credits for graduation.
Yeah, so then we would just have to, we have to bring this special.
We have to bring that to committee and pop it through, but I think that would be the. Reasonable solution to that.
This will pass you that all, right, great point, thank you. Alright, see no further discussion, and we'll close uh. Discussion on these policies, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor? I, any opposed? The extensions, motion carries five to zero. Moving on to section seven amendments, I make a motion to approve resolution seven point one as written.
Second.
Emotional floor properly seconded, any questions or discussion on that motion? See none, we'll move to a vote, all those in favor, I, any opposed? The extensions. Motion carries five to zero. Section eight personnel resignations and make a motion to approve resolution eight point one and eight point two as written.
Second.
Emotional floor properly seconded, any questions or discussion on that motion? See none, we move to a vote, all those in favor, I, any opposed? The extensions. Motion carries five to zero. Section eleven personnel transfers, I make a motion to approve resolution eleven point one as written. Emotional floor properly seconded, any questions or discussion on that motion? See none, move to a vote, all those in favor, I, any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries five to zero. Uh, before we, our next item is section fifteen personnel leaves of absence. Um, we have an extensive list, again, I believe there are seventeen intermixed through there for the board. Believe there are three that were not supported by administration. Typically, what the board does is to pull those out, uh, to vote on those separately. Uh, so I believe Mr. Brow will be making two motions uh, based on that, so just for your awareness to go into that.
Just a point of clarity, every one of these has a recommended action of approval, and I believe it just got carried forward instead of changing that to match the actual documents. So make sure we are watching this, if one does, it's rare that they come forward with a a not approved recommendation. They don't match.
Section fifteen personalities, that is, and they can wish we approve resolutions fifteen point one through fifteen point seven as written. Emotional floor properly seconded, any questions or discussion on that motion? Uh, and I believe these are all supported. Alright. Uh, with that said, we will move to vote, all those in favor, I, any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries five to zero, continuing in the section fifteen personally, making a motion to approve resolution fifteen point eight as written. Emotional floor properly seconded, any questions or discussion on that motion?
Just, so for example, this has recommended action approved, but the actual document says not support, so it just that.
Thank you, Mr. Rowley. See no further discussion, we move to a vote, all those in favor? All those opposed? No, no.
No, I'm sorry.
So that is a navy. Alright, thank you, um, any extensions? Our motion fails zero to five. Staying in section fifteen personalities, that is, make a motion for resolutions fifteen point nine through fifteen point one five that written.
Second.
Emotional floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? See none, we'll move to a vote, all those in favor, I, any opposed? The extensions. Motion carries five to zero. And finally, with section fifteen. I make a motion to approve resolutions fifteen point one second, fifteen point one seven as written. Have a motion on the floor properly seconded, any questions or discussion on that motion? It's see none, we'll move to a vote, all those in favor? Any opposed? No, nay. Any extensions? Motion fails zero to five. And finally, section twenty one, other business, I make a motion to approve resolution point one point one and twenty one point two as written. We have emotional floor properly seconded, any? Um. Questions or discussion on that? See none, we move to vote, all those in favor, I, any opposed? Any extensions, motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Mr. Ralph, thank you, Mrs. Starkey, we are on to section twenty five, board report and discussion items. Start with twenty five point one, Delaware School Board Association. This is starting.
So Dr. Mary, just time is winding down, which um, sad about, but I just wanted to let you guys know they are, they had one interview last week and one interview this week. Um, to find a replacement for him. Um, the dues, we voted on that uh, this past week and. The multiplication factor staying the same, which is really good, you know, it's really high and it's come down in the last few years, but maintaining and doing a great job, so. That was good, so it was eleven again this year, and then um. Board of directors, the boot camp course for board members, I mean, I, none of us are new this year, I know, but it. We recommended anybody who wanted to attend um, that we were welcome to, so it's free to us because we are members of the SBA. Um, so if you want to go, you can let me know or let him know. And I think it's July P.
That is, that's all right, that is correct.
That's, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Starkey, questions or discussion for Mrs. Starkey and D S B A? And I will say that boot camp, while it is geared towards new board members, it is a good refresher, um, and and good. Discussion on the financing uh, fiscal aspect of education, so good refresher for anybody who can attend. I did actually put it on my calendar, we'll see how it works out. Alright, thank you, this is starting, we're on to uh, item twenty five point three, go to the order, opportunity for board members to address any topics not otherwise covered on the agenda. Oh. Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Ralph, twenty five point two legislative, I'm just gonna be sure, we have not met in our last meeting, next meeting is May thirty first, now it's moved to twenty five third. Yes, sorry about that, sir. Way ahead of myself here. Um, thank you, Mr. Ralph, any questions, discussion, Mr. Ralph? Thank you, sir. Uh, now twenty five point three, go to the order, opportunity for board members to discuss any items not covered elsewhere on the agenda. Floor is open. This is starting.
Um, again, I'm just, I'm always impressed by just the talent here, so last night was, of course, come through at the high school and. Impressive. So just a shout out to them and everyone who's involved in that.
Thank you. Uh, I did have uh. Several items, so number one, I can cross off uh, this Katie Smalecki and the I Love Lake Forest eggs, we covered that. Um, but I love Lake Forest Day, overall, just a phenomenal event. Uh, thank you to uh, Mrs. Simpson and rest of the administration and staff and everybody that was involved. Uh, very well-run, very well-organized, very well-attended, um, and really just a, just an exciting day, so hats off to everyone. Uh, that was also a very big day for our district, uh, community overwhelmingly supported our plans. Uh, our future for the district in terms of referendum, some of the things we wanted to do and needed to do in terms of funding, so cannot, I bless you. Cannot say enough uh, how much uh, this board appreciates, and I know the district and the staff appreciates. Uh, that the community support, um, and we certainly appreciate everyone who's involved in getting us to that point, so. Hats off to everyone, thank you. Um, uh, Mr. Ralph and I had the pleasure of attending the Felton High School Alumni Association banquet, their annual banquet. Um, and the board is invited because that group does provide scholarships to Lake Forest graduating seniors each year. Uh, this year, uh, they were awarded, uh, they awarded eight scholarships, uh, one of which went to Mr. Ralph's second daughter, little daughter. Um, so just a really great event, a great evening, um, and it's really nice to see that that community support. Um, I know I was unable to make the Harrington Alumni Association meeting, which was our banquet, which was a week later. So if anyone, Dr. Um, Wyatt, do you have?
They thirteen. Scholarships are two thousand dollars each.
Wow.
And. Harrington uh, alumni is a little bit different because you have to be a descendant of someone who attended Harrington High School. Um, so several of the. Recipients of the scholarship um, were in other states and uh, there were nine, I believe, that went to. Uh, currently our students, which was really nice. Well attended.
And in. Not to openly correct you, Dr. Wyatt, but I had a discussion with someone about that in the association, and I was corrected where they say. It's not a requirement, that is their strong preference and who they will provide it to first, but in absence of those, they do provide to other.
They did say that they did not have, they could have given. Three additional scholarships, but did not have the applicants for them, so I think. We should encourage our students to apply for every scholarship.
Absolutely. Uh, thank you, ma'am. Um, and then just one other thing I had, to today was an exciting day for our district, at least. Eleven members of our staff. One of which I believe is is safely in the back. Um, today was the uh, over the edge uh, to where uh, supporting the Special Olympics of Delaware. Um, we had eleven staff members that uh, rappelled or scaled down a seventeen-story building, TV bank building in Wilmington. Uh, those were Tristan Jester, Megan Hicks, Stephanie Ball, Rebecca Torbert, Dorian Klaus, Rebecca Craig, Melissa Docwitz. Uh, Mrs. Kimberly Marquis in the back, Heather Hitchens, Amy Calhoun, and Cassandra Cannon. Um, so I was uh, lucky enough to, I was gonna try to go up this morning and had a child's doctor appointment that ran late, but I did. Uh, watched the entire thing, so I saw you going down. We'll talk about it later, and then for the technique, right, but uh, it was an exciting thing to see uh, what happened to be all these ladies uh, getting out of their element and doing that, and um. Uh, if I can. Find what? The announcer said, I think it's important. Early on, our first pair was going down, the the announcer said, in just a few years, the Lake Forest School District has gone from, let's get started. With Special Olympics to being one of the role models for the organization, uh, so that was, that was really uh. Well said, and hats off to everyone for doing that, I believe this is the second year that we've had this done, and we've almost tripled our amount of our participants, so. Way to go, kid.
This, for the record, I had anxiety watching it, so I can't imagine what it felt like that should be up there doing it.
Especially the photo walk at the beginning, right, when they go off the edge and they lean back and they do this, I mean, oh. So. Uh, you know, I have been recruited and I, you know. We'll, we'll see, pie in the face with the milk. Maybe I'll, maybe I'll get Katie to come with me next year and I'll defer to her. Uh, that's all I had, anyone else have anything to discuss? Alright, I believe we do have a need for executive session this evening. So move. Emotional floor to adjourn into exec. Question, questions or discussion on that motion? Uh, here we know, we'll move to a vote, all those in favor, I, I, any opposed? Any extensions? The motion carries five to zero, uh, just to let you know what will occur, there will be, uh, the the board will come out of executive session, back into public session to adjourn. But there is anticipated to be no uh. Uh, business conducted, no votes taken, we'll simply come out to adjourn. With that said, our next meeting is in two weeks, which will be Thursday, May twenty fifth, right back here in the district office. Have a good, safe two weeks.